Councillors, officers, members of the public, welcome to this meeting of the Western Area Planning Committee. Before we start the meeting, can you just make sure you're aware of the fire regulations, which are up on the screen behind me, I hope? Make sure you know where your nearest exit is. And if you hear the fire alarm, we go down the stairs and meet across outside Waitrose, under the canopy there. It is raining, so we'll need the canopy tonight. Can I also ask you to make sure your phones are switched to silent or turned off? And councillors, can you make sure that your card is firmly into the back of the console, so that we can hear clearly? Just to remind the members of the public that this is a meeting in public, not a public meeting, and delighted to hear from you, join public speaking, but please don't join in the debate apart from that. And could I perhaps remind councillors that we're here to determine a planning application, not to proofread an agenda or to get rid of a few of our own rants? It's here, please, one item on the agenda, can we just look at it in terms of planning, please? Minutes of the last meeting, they've been, I hope, laid out for the last 30 seconds, 30 minutes, I should say. Are you quite happy for me to sign them as a correct record?
Agreed.
Apologies for absence, Emma.
We have apologies from councillors Jo Hargreaves, Pat Frost, Stephen Hill and John Ward.
Thank you very much. And any declarations of interest, Emma?
All Farnham Town councillors, I believe, declare a non-perpetual interest in the applications on the agenda.
Thank you very much. And are there any questions from the members of the public?
None received.
Peter, are there any relevant updates to government guidance that you could give us this evening?
Yes, thank you, Chairman. I do have a general update, following receipt of updated National Planning Practice guidance. It relates specifically to financial considerations. You will have seen in the past that officers always refer to these where relevant, and usually in relation to where we're getting a net gain of an additional dwelling, and specifically the new homes bonus and the figure that would result from approving development, which results in a net gain of dwellings. So just as a background, Town and Country Planning Act states that any local financial considerations are a matter to which local planning authorities must have regard to in determining planning applications, as far as they are material to the planning application. Local financial considerations are defined as grants from government or sums payable to an authority under the community infrastructure levy. This means that the new homes bonus is capable of being material consideration where relevant. But specifically, the new guidance, which is different to previously, is that it sets out that whether or not a local financial consideration is a material to a decision will depend on whether it could help to make a development acceptable in planning terms. It is not appropriate for a decision to be made on the basis that development could have the potential to raise money for a local authority or other government body alone, it must relate to the development. So as the council does not rely on new homes bonus, in this instance, to mitigate against the effects of development to make it acceptable in planning terms, based upon this updated advice, it should not now form a material planning consideration. If, of course, this was to change, or a decision were taken with regard to monies from a specific development to mitigate an impact, the appropriate advice would, of course, be given to members and it would follow a similar advice previously, highlighting what that figure was and how it's going to be used. So hopefully that's clear. I'll circulate it in an email for you. And any questions?
Yes, do take any questions after the meeting with Peter, but, as he said, we have asked for these longer updates and the slightly more complicated ones to be given to us in a simple written form as well, so that we can make sure we understand what we're being told. I didn't introduce the officers, we seem to be dwindling away tonight, so we're down now to Peter Cleveland, the Head of Development Control, and Louise Yandell, who is the area head. Oh, God, you're wrong again, haven't I? One of these days. I was fine for Southern, team leader, area team leader, I do apologise, Louise, for Southern and Western, which is what we're here for tonight. So moving straight on then to the application for planning permission, A1, land at Delside, Wings Road in Farnham. And Louise, you're going to introduce this, I think.
Thank you, Chairman. This application is for the erection of a dwelling. The site is located on the western end, at the western end of Wings Road. The site is currently garden amenity space associated with the adjacent property, Delside. This photograph shows the Wings Road street scene with the application site in the centre at the rear of the photograph. A public footpath runs to the north of Wings Road and along the northern boundary of the application site. This photograph is taken from the front of the site, looking into the site itself. There is a tree subject to a protection order to the rear of the site. This photograph is taken looking north, with 23 Hope Lane in the background of the photograph. This final photograph is taken from within the site, looking south, with the host property, Delside, to the left of the photo. This slide shows the block plan. The property, which is indicated in red, would be located at the end of Wings Road. Delside is positioned just next to the proposed property. Free car parking spaces would be laid out to the side of the property, and amenity space is positioned to the rear and the side. The proposed property would have three bedrooms. The property would be faced with bricks and would have a tiled roof. The property would have dormer windows and a porch, and a bay feature which would add interest to the overall elevations. Members will note from the agenda that there has been a number of previously refused schemes on this site. In particular, there's been three recent refusals for a new dwelling. These have been refused on a mixture of tree grounds and due to insufficient car parking provision. The current proposal provides free car parking spaces in line with the council's guidance, and in addition to this, the council's expert tree officer has confirmed that the property is now sufficiently well separated from the tree to the rear of the property, so as not to encroach onto the protection area. In conclusion, the proposal would provide an additional dwelling in a sustainable location in Farnham. The matters of principle and technical opinion are highways access and parking, the effect on the SPA, the impact on trees and biodiversity, and the matters for members' judgment are the impact on visual amenity, the impact on residential amenity, housing standards and the provision of amenity space. The recommendation remains as set out in the agenda, that permission be granted subject to the conditions and informatives, and in the event that Section 106 for the same contributions is not agreed, that permission should be refused for the reasons set out in the agenda. Thank you, members.
Thank you, Louise. This application is subject to public speaking. We just have one speaker tonight, an objector, Mrs Dowley. Would you like to come forward? I think Emma will have explained the system. There's no hurry, and we won't start the four minutes until you've started to speak. And it's just the big, large button to press to get your microphone.
Good evening. I speak on behalf of residents who live in Wings Road and who have objected to the proposed development at Delside, and for those who are unable to attend this meeting. We've examined the plans and we know the site well, and those objecting have done so on the basis of density and size of dwelling, loss of amenity, increased traffic and pressure on parking, plus there is concern for protected trees, and as such, our objections are set against Waverley Borough Council's local plan policy D1, which concerns the environmental implication of new development and seeks to protect neighbours' amenities, the character of the locality, important assets and highway safety. This specific application has been submitted seven times for the same plot, and each application has either been refused or deemed invalid, including one refusal by appeal, which gave the main reason as loss of local amenity regarding a large ancient oak tree with a tree preservation order in place in the inadequate space for parking and turning, neither which have changed with the re-submitted plan. The sharp bend on Wings Road, close to the proposed site's driveway, already restricts the availability of safe on-street parking space nearby, and parents who walk their children to and from school along the pathway fear the increase in traffic will further the likelihood of a collision between a car and a child, especially as the path section that enters Wings Road at this junction is on a steep downward slope, and children running or using scooters can gather quite a lot of speed. The proposed site of the development is a small triangle of land which has an open aspect enjoyed by local villagers and people who use the public path which runs alongside the site. Building here would obscure the striking view of the beautiful oak tree. The mature oak, identified as T7, has a tree preservation order in place and is a beautiful dominant landscape feature within Wings Road, and it is highly visible from our surrounding homes and the main road and public footpath. It has significant public amenity value and makes a positive contribution to the character and appearance of the area for residents who enjoy the diverse wildlife the tree has attracted. It is therefore of concern to the neighbours that the aboriculture report only seeks to reduce the potential harm for retained trees, rather than seeking to eliminate harm fully, especially as the tree is still growing and any protection zones will need to allow for that future growth. There also does not appear to be any reference to an ecology report or protection of the biodiversity currently in and around the plot. The aboriculture impact assessment presupposes there will be no disturbance to the land in a way that would impact the tree, but we would like to confirm that any harm to the tree is fully eliminated. Furthermore, Waverley Borough Council has highlighted five-year supply of housing land to meet the requirements in the emerging local plan. Although though one house does not seem to significantly impact the larger scheme, this will be the seek-such-house built into a garden in this section of Wings Road, and if allowed to continue, will set a dangerous precedence which is impacting the character and beauty of the local area. Finally, please note that our objection in respect to the proposed development is not personal to the family, and we have taken every effort to present accurate information for your consideration before reaching your decision. We understand that Farnham Town Council and the Farnham Society share these concerns, along with the Tree Preservation Order Team at Waverley Borough Council, who have repeatedly objected to the scheme. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Mrs Dowley. Thank you. Members, over to you.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I am the local member that called this project in, so I am the one you must thank for bringing you out on this rather rainy evening. And I did so because of the strength of the local opposition and its cogency. This is the sixth application, by my count, although I think some of us are losing count. If you look at page nine on the agenda, you will see that there's been four refusals by Farnham Town and Waverley Borough Council, in 2009, 10, 16 and 17. One application would be due on in 2016, and here we go with the present application in 2017. Two of these refusals went to appeal and were dismissed in 2011 and 2017. In each application, there's been a modest amendment to the scheme, but many objections have not been accommodated. If there was an award for patience, Madam Chairman, I think one candidate would be the applicant, but there should be another award for the objectors, who have consistently found reason to object to this scheme. If you would turn perhaps for a moment to page six, the plan. It's called Garden Land, although the owner says to me that it's not a garden, it's just a waste patch that is neglected, which is, which is fair enough, but it's still a garden to the house. So you can't really call it garden grabbing when the man is trying to build on his own There is a large area of hardcore fill, which is already placed in order to support the three car parking spaces. And you will note from the plan that the car parking space three, with a hardcore fill wedge on the bank, is very close to the root spread of the tree, which I understand should have a radius, a radius of 12 times the diameter of the bowl of the tree. In fact, there's two oaks on this boundary with a TPO on, but only T7, number seven, is the one that's close. Looking at pages six and seven, you will see that the site is an elongated triangle, and it has a steep bank and a ditch on the diagonal on the western boundary. The elongated handle pointing eastwards serves access to four houses, Delside being one of them. The drive makes a sharp access to Wings Road, and that is not the end of Wings Road. Wings Road turns northwards and then once again westwards before it reaches its end. So there'll be really poor access from anybody approaching from the north, but three houses already, four houses already have this problem, so it's only going to get a little worse. The house is seven metres high, two-storey, and 14 metres in width, and by its orientation, that 14 metres is fully visible in the westward view from Wings Road. We get the benefit of all 14 metres of it, and that's raised even more objection from local people. It's really out of kilter to the neighbouring houses. And in fact, the house as designed is only 1.4 metres from the adjacent Delside boundary on one side, and it's very close to the bank, the top of the bank on the other side. I believe the distance from the house to the boundary fence is recommended to be three, but we've got 1.4 metres. If built, any public view of the oak trees and other growth on the boundary will be completely obscured by the tree, but then that is not a planning matter. Farnham Town Council maintained its objection on the grounds of overdevelopment and the cumulative effects of intensification of development in the village, and as we've pointed out to us, that is quite considerable. If you look now, please, at page 12, you will note, there's 17 objections from six objectors and 12 supports from three. I can confirm the validity of the objections, I've been there, had a look, checked them The application, I think, is contrary to the 2002 local plan policies D1, 4, 6 and 7. It also remains contrary to Farnham Design Statement, and also contrary to the 2017 Farnham Neighbourhood Plan. If we could take a commercial break here for a moment, this is the Farnham Neighbourhood Plan, and I feel that there's not sufficient seriousness given to the fact that that is now a legal document. It's worth a read. Page 14, I find something here.
councillor Fraser, can I just ask you to speed up or make some new points? We are just reading the agenda page by page, and it's not really what we're here for.
Well, I know, you're supposed to have done it already, Madam Chairman, I'm just pointing out a few.
I've done it several times, I can assure you, councillor Fraser.
Final paragraph of page 14. The proposal, I believe, is contrary to the national planning. And despite the waiver that's expressed by the officers on page 15, on pages 15 and 16 together, refusal reasons that it's cramped and the juxtaposition to the tree leads to pressure to lop and fell in the future, and that remains valid. As the house is now placed on the site, it remains a valid point, although again, it's not immediate, it is in the future, but it's worth bearing in mind. Both the oaks are claimed by the applicant. He's moved the boundary, I believe, by checking, and they are his oaks, and they are on the Delside, side of the boundary. Now, the current proposal has not entirely overcome the objection, although it's very, very difficult to check. In summary, building is not well-related in size, scale, mass, bulk or character to its neighbours. It is too close to Delside bungalow, and it's too close to the edge of the bank, which is, will remain a very poor and steep amenity area to service the house. The scale, the form and the design, EIA don't consider to be sympathetic to its surroundings, and the villagers are taking issue with that design and visual impact and call it unacceptable. The house is too big and the site is too small. Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Thank you, councillor Fraser. I don't know that we've started with such thingness, perhaps we can improve as the evening goes on. councillor Potts.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I am the other ward councillor for this particular ward and site. I'm afraid I see things slightly differently to my colleague on this one, and I'll just put this into a little bit of context. There have been a number of applications over the years, and I think a number of us have had concerns about those. It's important that we understand Wings Road, it's a very large road, very mixed style of housing, various canvas, different layouts, so it's a very, very diverse part of Upper Hale. I do feel that this application is very much an unbalanced one, and from my point of view and looking at the application before me this evening, it is different to the previous application. Work has been done to address a number of the previous concerns around the TPO tree. In terms of the parking, it's a two-bedroom property, we've got three parking spaces Parking is at premium, I don't disagree, in Wings Road, as it is in the majority of roads in Upper Hale, in other parts of Farnham and in huge parts of the whole of this country. And so I don't see that there's an issue with the parking. And from what I can see before me tonight, the issues that were raised by the inspector in the last appeal especially, have been addressed sufficiently that we would not have strong grounds to turn this one down this evening. And I therefore will be supporting this, and as I say, I can see no reason that we can legitimately not approve this one this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Potts. councillor Hodge.
Thank you, Chairman. This is an untidy, odd-shaped piece of scrub land that has sat doing nothing for many, many years, certainly for the years I've been walking past it. And I have to say that a moderately sized house that fits in will make good use of this space. As far as I can tell from reading the paperwork, the tree and parking issues have been addressed, so that would satisfy any inspector's future look at it. I do think a condition for removing permitted development rights for extensions would be prudent in this tight space, but otherwise, I'm very happy to agree this one.
I'll ask the officers about that towards the end. councillor Leah.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I'll be brief as well. I think removing PD rights is a good idea, I think that addresses some of the issues. But actually, just with regard to the agenda this evening, I highlight two points here, and it says here that the council's tree and landscape officer is also satisfied that the design sought under this current application takes on board the issue of the tree proximity to the dwelling, and has overcome the reasons for the previous refusals. I think we have to take that into consideration, we're not experts on trees, and I think our tree and landscape officer is. More salient for me is page 27, which talks about the previous planning inspector. He said he considered under the appeal for 1872 and 2010 that the proposed dwelling would be in keeping with the character of the area, and that there was little evidence to suggest that the development would appear cramped. The current proposal seeks a dwelling with a smaller footprint, so that's sought under 1872, and therefore it's considered that the proposal would not amount to overdevelopment. That is a principle for development, we have nowhere to go with this, so I don't understand why we're here, quite frankly, and I support councillor Potts. Thank you.
I think it's called democracy, councillor Leah. councillor Storey.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I shall be very succinct, since councillor Leah has just about said everything I was going to say, which is, to me, it's very simple. The previous application was refused, went to appeal, everything that we refused it on was dismissed, apart from the tree and the parking. Those matters have been addressed and now appear to be satisfactory. The planning inspector's report is a material consideration, and I don't think we have anywhere to go, other than to accept this.
Thank you, councillor Storey. councillor Hyman.
Thank you, Chairman. Again, in all the normal considerations, this one's very much on the balance, because I can see that the applicant has done their best to get around all the past reasons for refusal. Nevertheless, I still see the Farnham Town Council's position and agree in terms of the Farnham Design Statement and F and P1, so, you know, whether we, if that was the issues alone, I think perhaps it might be risky to refuse this development. I see it as garden grabbing, myself. I know the site, an old school friend of mine used to live over the back of it in Farnham Park, close to me, he used to be up around there all the time, so I do know the area well, but I understand the objector's point of view. My concern here is, I thank councillor Fraser for having gone through various parts, particularly on page 14, the bottom of page 14, saves me reading that out. There is, I think on page 28 is an issue here, where in the conclusion, we're told the proposal will result in an additional dwelling in a sustainable location in Farnham, but the National Planning Policy Framework defines sustainability fairly closely. And I don't know whether the officers would like to read, or whether they'd like me to read paragraph 119 of the planning of the NPPF 2012.
I think we're all well aware of the definition of sustainability. Can you get, carry on, please?
If you'd like to tell me what 119 says, if you're well aware of it, Madam Chairman, because I'm happy to read it out. If everybody doesn't know what it says, I'll read it. Then it says, "The presumption in favour of sustainable development", paragraph 14, "does not apply where development requiring appropriate assessment under the Bird's Habitat directives is being considered, planned or determined". And of course, the directive itself requires assessments.
Right, well, I'll ask the officers to speak about that when we do the permitted development rights. Is there anything else you want to bring to the committee?
Well, ultimately, the issue here comes down to paragraph 113, which is contrary to as well, as there's no any evidence unless officers can confirm that we have got that and got an assessment, which they don't think they can or they'd have said so. So contrary to statutory instruments circular 62005, and I would, as I usually do, say that we have no option in law but to refuse consent accordingly. Thank you, Chairman.
councillor Hyman, councillor Ashwood.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Just one point, I think councillor Leah's said everything else that I was going to make a point of, but the, someone mentioned the five-year land supply. If we have read recent appeals and inspectors' decisions, I don't think that applies at the moment, so that's another factor, depending which way you take it. But this is an attractive design for a two-bedroomed property, which I find fitting in with the local scene, I really do. Thank you.
councillor Nasir, did you indicate?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I heard councillor Fraser, who's a very nice person and friend, took something which he could say that it should be stopped or something, but I can't find anything in there. And I fully support Judea and Mike and Storey's and other councillors' thing that we don't have any points to reject it, and I fully support them regarding it. Thank you, Mr Chairman.
Thank you, councillor Nasir. councillor MacLeod.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I find this a very difficult application because I
I find this a very difficult application, because I would very much like to support the objectors, the town council, and the Farnham Society. I think as often we're being told that there's a virtual certainty that if this one went to appeal, it would be allowed. So in that sense, we'd perhaps be wasting everybody's time and raising false hopes. I would, if we had a free hand, I would want to vote against this. But if it's as certain as we seem to be being told that this would be allowed at appeal, as some of the other councillors said, it's difficult to see that we have a choice. Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Thank you, councillor MacLeod. Turn to the officers now. Anything you wish to comment on, and also the permitted development rights, if you could advise.
Yes, in relation to the permitted development rights, if I can just refer you to condition three on page 29, we have removed permitted development under both classes A and B of the general permitted development order, and they refer to extensions to the property and roof extensions. So they wouldn't be able to build extensions under permitted development without coming in for permission first. And in relation to councillor Hyman's comment in relation to paragraph 119, there is a legal agreement progressing to mitigate for the impact on the SPA. Subject to this, the proposal would not be in conflict with the habitats regulations, and an appropriate assessment is not required, and that is nearing completion at this time. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and I think we can move straight to the recommendation. The recommendation is, as in your papers, that subject to the completion of an appropriate legal agreement to secure contributions in respect to the terms based in Heath's Bar by the 27th of March 2018, and subject to conditions 1 to 10 in your papers and informatives 1 to 8, that permission be granted. Can I see all those, please, in favour of granting permission?
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight.
And those against?
Two.
And there's also a recommendation B, that in the event that the requirements of recommend A are not met, that permission be refused. Can I see all those in favour of that recommendation?
Unanimous.
Thank you very much. That completes the business of the evening. Wish you a safe journey home. Thank you.